Right, good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 18th. We'd like to welcome everyone to our regular school board meeting. I'd like to do a roll call really quick. And then can call us to order. Joining us online, we have member Donley. In the boardroom, we have members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Higgins, and Bellamy. We also have our superintendent, Dr. Bryant, and our student representatives, Ms. Shaw and Mr. Peck. Peck or Peck? Peck. P-E-K. Thank you. Welcome. They are transitioning. So we have two of them right now. This is great. So with that, we'd like to, Ms. Shaw, can you lead us into into the pledge, please?
With allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
And whenever you're ready, the land acknowledgement, please.
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and its resilience of its indigenous peoples. Chinon.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our opening statement. And again, we'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting. And thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School Board. The board would like also thank our students, parents, teachers, staff, school partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talents, and your, of course, tax dollars. So welcome. That brings us to item A3, which is the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as written.
Moved in second to approve the agenda as written. Any opposition? Hearing seeing no opposition, excuse me. The minutes are approved as presented. And that brings us to item B with our military report. Welcome, Colonel.
Evening. Thank you. For those of you who haven't met me, I'm Colonel Eric Dunn. I'm the mission support group commander at Joint Base Elmandore-Fritcherson. It's nice to be here tonight. Just a couple of quick things. Today, we hosted 26 high school, middle school, and a couple of principals from the career and technical education from a few of the schools throughout the district. At the base, we gave them a pretty good base tour. We started them off with pastries and coffee to get them fired up. And then we brought them from one side of the base to the other and back, seeing everything from a lot of our base support functions to, you know, our morale, welfare, and recreation, to even seeing an F-22 static display and some of the mission things that we do on the base. And it was a really good tour. We're waiting to hear some feedback because we want to make that better and better as we do it in the future. But I think it was a good experience for those teachers and principals to see not just what you see on TV, what we do at a military base, but all the ins and outs of what we do. Not just the military members who wear the uniform, but the thousands of civilians that we have in case some of their students want a place to work and be a part of the base. So hopefully, that has a positive impact. And if anyone gets feedback, please pass it on to us. But we definitely enjoyed having them out. We actually went and visited, I think it was King Tech about a month or so ago. And so this was kind of reciprocating back so that some of the teachers and principals could see the base. So that was pretty neat. And then this is Month of the Military Child for April. And so we really appreciate the schools throughout the district celebrating with us. We're getting lots of great feedback about just the great support that the military students have throughout the district and the schools. Everything from simple things like a pizza party to special assemblies, decorations in the hallways, recognition during morning announcements. We're just really grateful at the support that we get throughout the district and appreciate it. And then we've had just some good interactions with some of our military units with the schools. Over at Ursa Minor on Jay Bear, our 17th Combat Sustainability Support Battalion got to welcome students at the school. We try to do that every now and then. And then also, the 11th Airborne Division Band has been spreading musical cheer throughout some of the schools in the district. Everything from the Wind Ensemble, the Brass Quintet, and their rock bands. They've really enjoyed visiting the schools and playing for them. But that's all that I have. Do any of you have questions for me?
Thank you, Colonel. Any questions for the Colonel? I don't see any, but thank you very much for your service and for your report.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. And that brings us to our student report.
All right, so we had our last meeting of the school year on April 11th at 11:15 in the morning. We started off how we normally do with our call to order, adoption of agenda and minutes. And then we went to our school reports where we heard from, our school spotlights, where we heard from Northern Lights ABC, Mirror Lake West, AMCS, Romig, and Wendler. And then I gave my student rep report. Member Lessons made some comments. And then we had a little report from our advisors. We did go through our election process for the Vice President, Secretary, and Public Relations positions, where Maggie Cothran won Vice President, Zoe Fensel won Secretary, and Bella Gunta Chavez won Public Relations. So super excited to have them on the board with Josh next year. We did go and pass a resolution brought to us by Diamond called the 2023 Snow Days and Suspensions Resolution. And there was noted opposition to that vote. Then we had a short discussion about drills and just that kind of feedback and what we think about how they can be improved and what we think is good about them. And then closed off our meeting, we had a little, everyone got certificates and all of the board, e-board, got little plaques as all of our board, but one of them were seniors. So did that. And then there is the OSOG Conference in Skagway on April 28th through 30th. And then our next meeting, their next meeting, is September 12th at 8:15 in the morning. Quite a while away, so.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Any questions for Ms. Shaw? Yes, member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to thank Ms. Shaw for the report, and I did want to highlight that at least a former, maybe current SAB member, Jesse Tyrell from Polaris, was appointed to the Assembly as a youth representative. And so it was exciting to see him sworn in earlier this month.
Right, thank you. And yes, member Lessons.
I just wanted to reflect on the privilege that I've had to be the board liaison to SAB over the past year and thank Ellie for her leadership. I wanted to share for the community that, you know, a lot of my opportunities to speak to them, I've been updating them on policy changes or the overall fiscal situation. And I realized that I hadn't really talked about, like, what is the purpose of a school board? And I brought it back to our goals. And I pointed out, yeah, we have our reading. We want students to read. We want students to be proficient in math. We want students to be college, career, and life ready. And I knew that I was going to be headed down to Juneau. And I knew that it would be more effective to bring their thoughts with me than to bring a whole plane full of students. So I set up a couple of big sticky notes at the back of the room and asked them to reflect anonymously, you know, for seniors, what was the most meaningful part of your time in ASD? You know, who were the people or what were the opportunities that helped you along the way? What are your goals? For our returning students, you know, I asked them to identify their goals for the next one to five years, identify the supports and experiences they think they would need to get there. And I asked them to reflect on what larger class sizes or the loss of extracurricular programs or experienced teachers might mean, thinking that their thoughts might carry a great deal of weight among our legislators. And then I asked them, is there any else you want me to bring in? So I was able to directly share their thoughts via sticky note as I connect with people. And so I just want to say that I appreciated the insights and just honesty that our students brought to that. And I hope that our legislators were listening. So thank you, Ellie, for your service. And thanks to all of our SAB members. It's been a remarkable learning opportunity for me.
Thank you, member Lessons. And that was a great activity. She actually shared it with me, too. And I used a little bit of it with my advocacy work. All right, not seeing any more questions or comments. We will move on now to item C, which is our goal monitoring. We were going to have our conversation around the report that was given to us at our last meeting. And that is, there's two parts to that report. The first part, the goal that we're addressing is our college, career, life readiness goal. That goal reads, beginning with the freshman class of 2020, September 2020, the percentage of high school students graduating life-ready as well as college and/or career-ready will increase from a baseline to be determined in the spring to 90% in spring of 2026. That is the goal. We're looking at two indicators. One is the attendance. And the other is the completion of the AXIS, the Alaska Career Information System, which is gold three point, which is interim goal 3.3 of the CTL goal. So I want to confirm that all four components of the monitoring report are present. The report shows what is being monitored, that the specific goal and interim goals. The report shows data for three, at least three previous reporting periods, the current reporting period, and the target reporting periods. The report shows the superintendent's evaluation of performance. And finally, the report shows supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation via the tables and/or next steps that are included in the report. So with all of the components being present, we are ready to begin our monitoring conversation. Some of you have sent in questions. Others of you brought them with you tonight, which is fine. So the purpose, for the purpose of understanding, we want to do our who, what, and why category questions first. Once we have a full understanding, we'll move on to our, to the what. I'm not the what, the how, sorry. So with that logic in mind, we are ready to begin our conversation. And Dr. Bryant, did you want to?
No comment here. We're happy to answer your questions.
All right, so who has a question for the superintendent and the team? Okay, we'll start with member Lessons.
Sure, I spent, you know, I guess a lot of time on Slide 5 to start with. It shows us a five-year trajectory, or six-year trajectory, seven-year trajectory. And it's not really a very good picture. You know, before COVID, we were having 9, 10, 11,000 students chronically absent every year. And then we have fuzzy data for the start of COVID. And then we ballooned last year to 18,629 students being chronically absent. And already this year, 14,524 students are chronically absent. I'm wondering which of the groups have seen the biggest change in attendance rates? And I don't know if that's something that I sent ahead of time or if this was a question that sort of percolated.
It was a wandering. It was one of your wanderings.
Okay, so I guess, yeah. How do we go from 10, 11,000 students chronically absent to 18,000 or 14,000 students chronically absent? Even as the population itself is dwindling? There's just a lot of students.
So I'll start and then turn it over to others. So through the president to member Lessons, I think your assessment of attendance over time is accurate. Last year, we were still kind of in that post-COVID, still encouraging people to stay home if they were ill. And so we were still seeing the effects of COVID in that 19,000 some chronically absent students. It doesn't necessarily look great, but it is a little bit better this year. And we're still feeling the effects of COVID. It's just in a different way this year. And it has more to do with just people's ability to cope and mental health. So those are a lot of the reasons for absenteeism. There's also just a kind of an anecdotal kind of feeling that attendance isn't as much of a priority since COVID because people are prioritizing other things because we're pretty lenient about attendance. So that we're still seeing some of that kind of translate as well through our attendance rates. All that to say that it's definitely an area that we need to look at and improve. And so those are just kind of my initial thoughts around the numbers.
Yeah, at elementary level, you know, I concur with everything we're talking about. You know, one of the things that we want schools to be is an engaging place for families in the community to be able to feel welcomed and safe at that school, so at all schools. And so what we're seeing is a revitalization, revitalization of all those practices that we did beforehand, our first science fairs, our field trips, and all those activities and programs and pieces that are making schools more engaging for students beyond just the straight academics in the classroom that outreach. So the more that we can bring those things back into the schools, the better. I mean, if you go to Slide 4 with the grade level distribution, at elementary, you know, I think we should make a push at the kindergarten level and then look at emphasis of attendance starting in kindergarten and all the way up and making sure that's really important, that our families hear that we want to see students in school. Those are important things that I think we need to continue to message with our families.
Do you have a follow-up? Yes, this is relaying. So we were just talking about the SAB meeting. And I raised the issue of chronic absenteeism to the students. And I said, well, how many days is that? I said, well, I think it's 17. And that is not like a known number out there. And so it may be that we really, I mean, engagement, absolutely. But my takeaway from this conversation with a student was that maybe our messaging needs to be a lot more direct and say, you know, this is the number of days that will cause you to be chronically absent. And then I was thinking about a conversation I had with a middle school teacher recently who said, well, when they do come, the chronically absent students, they're lost. And I think both of those stakeholder sort of conversations, they're just really sad. Those are students who we're losing because they're not there. And we can't teach them if they're not there. And if they develop bad habits starting in kindergarten, that's not going to serve us for them well the rest of the trajectory. So I think it's, you know, we have, so this isn't a comment. This is another conversation. But, you know, even if you look, and I'm sorry, I'm looking at Slide 3. Right, we have an indicator. And it says the goal is increase the percentage of K-12 students achieving 90% attendance. But if we were to make it look a little more like our other goals, right, it would be smart goals. It would be specific. It would be measurable. And I feel like we might need to have a more targeted campaign. This just popped up in the April Alaska Reads Act, like D newsletter. And they were talking about some district whose name escapes me. And, you know, before they could even address K-3 ELA, they're focusing on attendance. So I guess that's a thought, a series of thoughts. But I really appreciate that we're having this conversation. And I look forward to other board members' questions, but.
Thank you. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So a question, just kind of a more basic nature on the data. The, to be counted in attendance in one of these tables, like by grade level, is it required that students are present for all classes or periods of the day? Or if a student's absent from one class or period, would they not count towards this metric?
So through the president, member Jacobs, we calculate attendance differently at the different levels. So we don't count a student absent in secondary unless they're gone 15 or more minutes in a class period. And elementary counts their attendance by half-days. So the attendance metrics are different between the divisions. We would have to drill down into this data to get more separated data if students who miss partial days are included in this data as well. So I don't know the answer to that question, but we could follow up and board connect.
So thank you. And I should have sent this in advance, so I apologize. It would be interesting, and it makes me wonder if there's, so did I understand your answer right? That if a student at the secondary level is absent from 15 minutes of one period, they're kind of absent for the entire day?
For that class period.
Got it. Okay, but we aren't sure if that one class period means they're included in this demographic.
Right.
Okay, copy. And then it might be interesting. And I don't know if we have this data or if it's more of an RFI or if it's worth digging into deeper. But knowing and having a list maybe of the common classes that students are absent from and missed 15 or more minutes, if that might tell us something, tell a story, and something the board can do to support. Like if it's, you know, something that's ELA-related or math-related, or if it's, yeah, by topic. And so curious about that. So thank you.
Okay, I don't see any hands. I have just a couple of questions. Looking at, I mean, you guys were all in the district when we had Destination 2020. And attendance was one of the targets. And as I recall, as I remember, every school had to have an attendance focus initiative. So we no longer have, I mean, we don't have that goal. That goal is now embedded in our goal number, our third CCL goal. Is it your, so knowing what you knew from back in 2020, well, when we ended Destination 2020 and we transitioned over into where we are now, does the opportunity for students, high school students, to make up, even middle school students, they can, there is no, I hear what member Lessons is saying when she says that, you know, when she's concerned that kids, you know, are chronically absent. They are, but they get to make up endlessly. What is, what impact is that? I mean, because at the high school level, teachers can just spend hours, days, just giving kids makeup work. And I'm not saying I'm against it, but it does not create the urgency to come to school. So I'm wondering what your thoughts are on that.
My thought on that is the majority of the kids that are chronically absent, they, even given many, many opportunities,
They don't make up.
they still don't make up the work. If there's something else that's keeping them from school and from the schoolwork other than, you know, if they, if they're wanting to make up stuff, especially at the high school level, all the lessons are on canvas and they can make it up when they're absent. And we have kids that could be considered chronically absent because of health issues and stuff, who are actually doing the work and stuff.
So the data that we have here would show them absent, but those kids would be actually making up the work and keeping up. They're just not.
The vast majority of kids, though, that are chronically absent are not making up the work when they return. And even with lots of chances and a lot of grace.
How do we translate the urgency of attendance to parents? I mean, I know we have no, we cannot police parents or tell parents what to do, but how do we, how can, that's a how question. But what strategies are we currently using that you are aware of with parents to let them know how crucial? Because when we look at, I think it's Slide 2, and it has, you know, a missed day of school is a lost opportunity for students to learn. We get it, but are we sharing that with parents?
I would say that, yes, we are. Our counselors are doing as much as they possibly can. The mental health providers that we're able to have in our schools are really being able to look and find out which ones of these kids are, you know, are being chronically absent. You know, over the years, even since Destination 2020, we've had a real decrease in the amount of administrative support or help that we have in our buildings because of budget cuts. And it just gets harder and harder as these numbers go higher and higher to be able to actually do these one-on-one outreaches for kids. I think that when we're really looking at attendance now, we have to be able to look at it as a whole community piece and get the information out. You know, we used to give away cars, and that really didn't change. That really didn't change the attendance rate, even when we gave away cars, right? I mean, so at some point, we have to look at and help our community realize that we have, we need the kids here. And if that means we're going to need to put more resources into community outreach or community campaigns, maybe we need to do that. At the end of the day, a kid that is really engaged in the classroom is usually going to be there, right? But what we're finding now is coming out of the pandemic, and I say coming out of the pandemic, we're two years out, right? And we're using this still, and it's kindergartners who, this is their first year in. But they went through the pandemic, too. They had their families back in their houses the whole time, even when they're little preschoolers. So this is a real big question. And it's one that to tackle is going to take a lot of different pieces. And it isn't going to be just us in our district. It needs to be probably more of a community event.
Yeah, and I would add to that that we do a lot of student-by-student work around attendance. Because usually, if a student, as Sven talked about, is having attendance struggles, there's usually a secondary issue that's causing that lack of attendance. And getting at that root cause of what that attendance issue is is really the hard work, right? Whether it's a medical issue or a family situation or homelessness, there's a lot of reasons why kids don't come to school or engage with school. And we have a lot of support for different kind of populations within our district where we do a lot of one-on-one work and outreach. We do home visits. We work with all sorts of different avenues to get at that student, to get them to school. And we're not always successful, unfortunately, because the need is growing, so.
And then I just add, you know, at the building level, we have our MTSS structures, right? We have our individual student problem-solving teams. Elementary schools also have your foundation leadership teams. So in those leadership teams, you work through some of those attendance mechanisms that help drive that. There's the red, yellow, and green stoplight charts so that you can send messages home to families, say, hey, you're in the green, your student's, you missed zero days or one day or two day. And then you're moving into the yellow and you've missed maybe four days or five days or six days. You move into the red, you're upwards of 12 or 13 or 14 days. Some of those things that we could probably do better as a district-wide practice. A lot of those happen in pockets at different elementary schools. We could probably have a stronger centralized approach to help support that message and share that. But the schools are at individual levels using their foundation teams, their individual problem-solving teams. But a lot of it happens at the individual level or locally at the school level. So that's some opportunity there.
Member Lessons.
So I'm just really curious. So who's in charge, I mean, at the individual school level? Is it, I mean, who, if we're doing student-by-student work for 14,524 kids, that's a lot of individual phone calls? Like literally, who are the people doing that work? And do we need to increase staffing?
At the middle and high school, it's mostly the counselors, some.
Could you clarify something? Is it 14,000 absences or 14,000 kids?
I don't, can you tell me which slide again?
I was looking at Slide, sorry, I was looking at Slide 3. And I simply looked at the enrollment. We have 39,645 students. And we have 25,121 students with 90% attendance, which leaves 14,524 students who are chronically absent.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, so as Sven indicated, counselors do a lot of that work at the secondary level. There, our security teams also do that work. Our administrators also do that. Our administrators also do that work. We also have different resources in Title I schools with support positions that may work on that as well. Title I budgets allow for additional personnel to address different school issues. And so some of our schools may have a social worker or or a different type of position that can support the work as well. So at the secondary level, typically, like Eric described at the elementary level, there is a support team that meets that it usually is comprised of counselors, security admin, and potentially other support positions in the building. And attendance is one of those things that they look at and how to support students and problems all around it, along with a whole host of other issues.
And then at the elementary level, it's the classroom teacher oftentimes that engages with the family, right? It's your, you're the, you're the, you're the home teacher for elementary students. So then with that, in addition to that, it's the principals that are reaching out and potentially front office staff.
Do we know the impact of subsistence and having to be culturally not at school? And how do we track? Do we track the reasons for kids not being at school? I guess is my question.
Yeah, I I can say that, yes, we do track why kids are not at school. It's it's self reported by parents when they're excusing those absences. So we have to rely on the honesty of families reporting those absences. And if they actually indicate the right thing so that we can track it. We do have a lot of families that still subsistence, subsistence fish or hunt typically in the fall or or spring. And we do allow for those those absences and excuse them and and keep them up to date as much as possible.
Other questions?
Can I just feed on to one other answer, just a little bit more about who's doing the work? You know, we have a lot of kids in crisis right now, and we have a lot of kids that are exhibiting extreme behaviors. And that's almost a full time job right there during the day for our staff. And attendance is not one that they get to a lot because of everything else that's going on. So while we do try to do all this, I I would not have confidence to be able to say that we're doing this every single day.
Member Holloman.
I'd just like to say more to the board. In 2008 or 2009, with stimulus money from the federal government, when the economy was being restarted, we actually developed a system of graduation coaches through the district that were focused on some of these issues, looking at kids that were on the bubble to graduate, but falling for some reason. Attendance might be down, grades might be down, but something was happening. And it was staff with support staff, not certified teachers. But the, and to some degree, the outcomes are anecdotal. But it was testimony from dozens of students that said this person turned things around. And it's tedious in that it means going out and finding that student because they're not at school. You can't go pull them out of class because they're not there. And then interviewing them and trying to figure out what the problem is and then garner some resources to help them. And it can be done, and it does have results, but it's a program we dropped for lack of funding. And of course, it would be ideal to do that for every student that's underwater. But we've never even began to think about doing that because that's just an absurd amount of money. But it is one of those things I use when when people talk about, well, we don't want to just throw money at the problem. It's like, well, if you would, it would help a lot. We, there are things like this we know how to do. We absolutely just lack the resources to do it. The the other thing I'll mention is that the duty of trying to track absences and call home is not evenly distributed. In in certain schools and in certain classes within certain schools, the absentee rate can be high. That means that some teachers may have to make a dozen calls every day if they're trying to stay up with it while others make one. So it really, I I think it's great to encourage people and to try to do it realistically. We can't really address it without staff, and we decided a long time ago not to staff for that for, I think, the right reasons. But it is something we could bring back if we if we had adequate funds.
Thank you. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So following up on President Bellamy's question regarding the steps and the resources that are being used. And then I think I heard Mr. Gustafson mention that the the efficacy and the utilization is going to be hit or miss, potentially based on staffing per campus. I feel like that's not something that we're discussing as often as we should be. Is it's it's a, it's a really significant justification for education funding in general. As Dr. Strumpler Johnson mentioned, when we are identifying the reasons why students are absent or addressing barriers to making students successful, so if we're not doing that with consistency, I guess my question is, are we letting students fall through the cracks? And how do we, how do we do better? I guess is to start us off.
Looks like we moved to our how question.
So so I could offer a couple of thoughts to to Member Jacob's question or or comment. On one, I I do think staffing is a major issue when it comes to the attendance problem. We've kind of talked around that a little bit, but more directly. When you think about at a secondary school, security staff, administrators, and counselors being like that primary group that's working on attendance, and then think about all of the other jobs that they do in a day. You know, attendance, while extremely important, isn't necessarily always an urgent need right that day at that time. And so staffing definitely helps. And and I was a curriculum principal and principal when grad coaches were placed in in high schools. And they did make a significant impact on getting some kids across that graduation stage because they had kind of a, almost like a life coach, like pushing them, pushing them down the road, right? And they were able to track homework and make sure kids got their assignments in. And, you know, they they really checked on them and and did a lot of legwork that our counselors weren't able to do because they're busy with other things that are urgent in their offices, responding to mental health and and all of the scheduling and all of those things that they have to do on a regular basis. But the other piece that I think is promising when we look at attendance around our our CCL work, especially as as a board goal and and looking at a transformation, is giving kids that pathway of why showing up is important. It's not just to get a diploma, it's to get a job and to have a plan for your future. And and it really gives, while while graduation is is coveted and and well respected as as an entity in our public education system, I think giving them that pathway to adulthood is much more inspirational and motivational sometimes for kids than just getting that piece of paper, you know? So I think that there's some potential there, and I think I I do think we're on the right track. Funding and staffing are are always the challenge.
Did you have a follow up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I guess my my request then, or I guess my wondering on this particular topic is, should we have a policy or a handbook that reflects our current reality and not our aspiration? If we're not, except our handbook indicates that there are consequences and and levels of graduated response based on the number of absences, things of that nature, and it references Alaska statute. And so you should, or documentation reflects reality is kind of my question. So should I take the form of updated documentation or a board policy or an AR? And I don't necessarily need the answer or commitment to that tonight, but something to think about. The other other wondering I had, and this goes to our data dashboard. And I think I'm reading this correctly when it indicates that we had 707 suspensions in 2223 for absentee or truancy. When I've read that historically, I assumed that that was students being tardy to class. But I, in looking at the handbook, it seems to indicate that we can suspend a student for being chronically absent as well. And so I'm trying to confirm if that's correct and then trying to understand the wisdom of taking a youth out of class for being absent from class.
Thank you for answering that. So I I think it's an astute observation. That's something that we we really work with our assistant principals on because most of those are out of the secondary level. So typically, if a student is suspended under that category, it's due to chronic truancy. So they are actively ditching classes, not excused. There have been many other interventions tried prior to that. Often, it's coupled with another offense such as disruptive behavior or something along those lines. And so each, I mean, each individual student has a different circumstance, but it is something that we are trying to move away from. And and typically, if truancy is the reason for a suspension, it's typically an in school suspension where we have the student in school, they may not go to regular classes, but they're still able to work on their work. And we do some restorative work in those those settings.
Follow up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I would encourage us, and I don't know if this is something the board should weigh into, I'll think about this. But in our handbook, it indicates that suspension for missing school days could be a consequence. And I, for the life of me, I don't, I don't see the wisdom there. As a matter of fact, I know students, and I've had plenty of youth in my home who have actively avoided in school suspensions by trying, trying to triangulate with different administrators who said that they should have an in school suspension and it'd go somewhere else. And so teenagers are exceptionally creative and never cease to amaze me. And so I would encourage us, just as a foster parent on numerous teenagers, to move away from the idea of suspending students who are absent. Tardy is another matter, you know, I I don't know the wisdom there, but I think it's certainly worth the discussion. But I'll talk with Madam President, and maybe she needs to talk me off the ledge from a board policy proposal before we go any further, but we'll have more discussion offline. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Member Jacobs. And yes, we can, we can talk. Other questions regarding attendance? Dr. Bryant, do you have anything to add?
I do not. I think this was a very great conversation. I think from it, there are a number of things that we can explore further. And to Dr. Strumpler Johnson's point, I think our CCL transformation will create that additional inspiration to aspire to a highly challenging job or, you know, completing your associate's rec credentials. I mean, the sky's really the limit. And of course, additional resources to fulfill these other structural deficiencies due to budget cuts will take us a long way, too, if we can get the funding.
I think East High School's Title I school, correct? Correct. So I was visiting East a couple of weeks ago, and Principal Brown took me to visit a class where he was reconnecting students to school. Students who were either had either dropped out or were in the, on the trajectory to drop out. And they had the most amazing person in that room for those kids. And it didn't matter what time of day they showed up. They knew they had that person. And so I I somehow, I think, having a person or persons available for kids, and and it's going to be tough because I I don't have the answer. But it, but we've got to, we got to try to figure out a system that takes kids where they are and and help them get better, even with attendance. So my final, not final, but my, I have a question on the other. We spent all of our time on the attendance rate. But we also, how is it going with the, where are we with the career planning? We start in the, could you just give an overview? We start in the eighth grade, and what what are those, what tools we're using to get kids through?
For the next, for the career planning? So we currently have varied views of AKCIS as a system across the secondary ranks. We also, so so those are numbers that we're looking to increase over time. The other item that we have going in this category is that we piloted last summer with our middle schoolers that took the King Tech High School Summer Program. It's an exploratory program. We've done the last couple of summers. We piloted a youth science tool, which is similar to AKCIS, but it it also has some, like some personality characteristic building of, like, identifying skills that you're good at, interests that you have, and and starting to pique your interest into what types of careers include those skills or kind of personality traits. And it was highly successful. We're hoping to do it again this summer. And as we start building our CCL work through the middle school ranks and into high school, that's a tool that we're looking to expand more at that level. And and then additionally, at the high school level, continue to work through AKCIS in a in a more substantial way. So that's really where we are. I think you're going to see a lot of growth in the next couple of years in that realm as we implement things.
Yes. Member Wilson.
I get really happy about that conversation. I had the the privilege of of traveling to Nashville for our our CCL work. And I was really happy to see there, there's so much, I understand they're further ahead in the process with their academies. But in in Anchorage, we have so many of those pieces and parts that exist with our partnerships, with the work being done in many of our schools and their classes, and and the opportunity to work more collaboratively and bring all those pieces and parts together to really benefit our students and our families and and our business community. I'm super excited about that work. I'm super excited about the the future opportunities for our students. And I wanted to say that the Summer Exploration Program, I got to be a part of that as as a business partner and heard so many wonderful things from students and and their parents regarding that program. So I'm super excited that's happening again. As is King, with King Tech or with any of our other programs, the opportunities for students to not only select their potential careers, but to deselect is just as important to save that time, to save training for for whatever business or organization that that they potentially could go into, or saving the, as a parent, saving all that money on college. It's fantastic. So I'm just going to throw out there, super excited about the work that's being done. So thank you.
Thank you. Hey, so I know probably 30 years ago, we used to have truant officers. And I know that, and I'm not suggesting that we go back to truant officers because I don't think that's the way either. But I do think, given our mental, our mental health and wellness strategies that we're trying to, that we're implementing, and really going back to what Mr. Jacob said, the reality of what of our situation, I do look forward to more conversations on how we can not just get kids interested in school, keep them in school, educate parents about school. Because I think the information that's on on the slides is very, is very important. And I think we just need to make it more public. And MJ is going to kill me because that's given his, his team more work to do. But I do think it's important for us to really campaign around the importance of attendance. And my final comment would be, because when I talk to secondary educators, the make, the 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 makeup policies are so overwhelming. Kid, you know, kids, a kid can, and I don't know the balance, but I know that it's overwhelming when you, when kids know that they don't have to be in school because they get the right to make up forever and ever and ever. That is, that's a heavy weight for our, for teachers. It it keeps them, you know, that's not continuous improvement, not for the student and not for our staff. So I don't have the answer, but that's one of the conversations I'd like to have in the future. Any other comments? You guys have been awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, so at our next meeting, we'll have another monitoring report for May, and good discussion. Thank you, guys. So that brings us now to our first hour of public comment. And I'd like to just review our decorum requirements for the boardroom. And so we're again happy that you're here today. If this is your first time, when you entered the boardroom, you would have, you could pick up a the guidelines that I'm going to review with you relative to providing public comment and or public testimony. So during public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is the public's time to speak.
This is the public's time to speak and the board's time to listen, which is why you may address the board on any topic, whether it's a agenda item or a non-agenda item, although there is a special place for agenda items, for you to talk specifically on agenda items. So for those of you who have signed up, we will begin our process. An action item memo is first introduced by the Vice President when we get to that part of the agenda. And if seconded by another board member, the President will open the floor for public comment. And that, so, but initially, for this, the initial round, as I said, you may comment on any item that you'd like. You will be allowed 30 sec, I mean, three minutes. 30 seconds wouldn't be much time, but you will have three minutes. We will give you a little ding ding warning in 30 seconds so that you can pace yourself to conclude your comments. So we, relative to the rules of the boardroom, we ask that no one attack a member or a speaker's motive. Speakers may point out what he or she believes to be a natural consequence of a board, of the board's action, but may not engage in speech that personally attacks others. Please refrain from disturbing the meeting. And for us in this boardroom, that means no cheering, applause, or outbursts. Attendees, where each board member will get one. So the board, as Board President, it is my duty to enforce these rules, these of civility and decorum. We use Robert's Rules of Order for our processes. So with these rules in mind, we will begin our first hour of testimony. We do not have any, I mean, a public comment. We do not have any student comment tonight. So we're going to start with, on our, on our phone, Sheri Streifick. Sheri, can you hear? Star six to unmute. Sheri, can you hear? Star six to unmute. All right. I see her there, but she's not hearing us, so I'll come back to her. Let's move on to, also on the phone. Oh. Can you hear me?
Yes, this is Sheri. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, you have three minutes.
All right. I'm going to address The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison. It is a graphic novel about Pacola, an 11-year-old black girl who endures her father's incestuous rape. This book is available to high school children as young as 14. This book can be found at Service, East, Tuyac, and Eagle River High Schools, in addition to some others. Pacola's rape is described on page 128. The following is a truncated version of her rape. "The tenderness welled up in him, and he sank to his knees, his eyes on the foot of his daughter. Crawling on all fours toward her, he raised his hand and caught the foot in an upward stroke. Pacola lost her balance and was about to careen to the floor. Cholli raised his other hand to her hips to save her from falling. He put his head down and nibbled at the back of her leg. His mouth trembled at the firm sweetness of the flesh. He closed his eyes, letting his fingers dig into her waist. The rigidness of her shocked body, the silence of her stoned throat, the confused mixture of his memories, and the doing of a wild and forbidden thing excited him, and a bowl of desire ran down to his genitals, giving at length and softening the lips of his anus. Surrounding all of this lust was a border of politeness. He wanted to blank her tenderly, but the tenderness would not hold. The tightness of her vagina was more than he could bear. His soul seemed to slip down to his guts and fly out into her. And the gigantic thrust he made into her then provoked the only sound she made, a hollow suck of air in the back of her throat, like the rapid loss of air from a circus balloon. Following the disintegration, the falling away of sexual desire, he was conscious of her wet, soapy hands on his wrists, the fingers clenching, but whether her grip was from a hopeless struggle to be free or from some other emotion, he could not tell. Removing himself from her was so painful to him, he cut short and snatched his genitals out of the dry harbor of her vagina. She appeared to have fainted. Cholli stood up and could see only her grayish panties so sad and limp around her ankles. The hatred would not let him pick her up. The tenderness forced him to cover her. So when the child regained consciousness, she was lying on the kitchen floor under a heavy quilt, trying to connect the pain between her legs with the face of her mother over her. I pray that we have the support of the ASD school board members to protect our children and remove these sexually graphic novels from our school libraries. Thank you for your time."
Thank you very much. Next, also telephonically, we have Ayu Kasatok.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome, you have three minutes.
I'm Ayu Kasatok, a New York mother of four children in the Anchorage School District and a product of ASD myself, having attended Denali, Oceanview, Abbott Loop, and Tudor Elementary Schools, Wandler Middle School, and graduating from East Anchorage High School in 1998. Tonight, I'm speaking to the land acknowledgement recommendation for the board and the recommendation for the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School to move to Abbott Loop. Though I am an Alaska Native person, I attended six schools in Anchorage School District. I didn't even know that we lived on Dunedinas until my late twenties. How can that be? In my day, just as it is today, ASD students only learned about Alaska Native peoples and cultures once in third grade. This terribly outdated curriculum centers non-native perspectives on indigenous peoples as others, speaks of us in past tense, and our communities as isolated and non-modern. It needs to be overhauled, but that's a conversation for another day. Having had terrible experiences going through that unit myself, I have gone into each of my kids' schools in their third grade classes to present a different perspective on Alaska Native peoples. Each time, I've found a rapt and attentive audience in these students. They're hungry to learn more and eager to engage in the vibrancy of Alaska Native cultural knowledge. Last year, my youngest son was in third grade. At his school, they brought together all of the third graders and made space for telling stories, sharing songs and histories, and asking questions. Taught them how to say "yagwe" and "good morning," and "shana," "thank you," and "dineina" and "asabaskan." I taught them that we're all living on the homelands of the Dunedinas and are responsible for being good guests here. At the end, a shy white child raised her hand and asked me why they'd never learned any of these songs before. I said, you know, that's a very good question. Why do you believe it's important to learn about Alaska Native people? She was quiet, and she said, I think that if other people moved into my family's house, I would want them to know about my family. I'd want them to know how we take care of our house, so we could live well together. She gets it. There's no one on earth that knows these lands and waters like the Dunedinas peoples that have always called this place home. And the most detailed history of this place is encoded in their language. Though not nearly enough, a meaningful land acknowledgement each day in our schools opens the door to more knowledge of this place and to our schools and communities. Additionally, I'd also like to note my full support for ANCCS to move into Abbott Loop School, and I hope you will agree. Clan of Buck, and good night.
Thank you very much. Next, in person, we have Robin Pecrow. Welcome, you have three minutes. Yes, if you would like, thank you, my apologies.
It's okay. It's Robin Pecrow, Pecrow, as in Papa and cruel. It's Swiss German in origin. Well, here we are again. Question. Is there a way to solve the growing concerns that parents, guardians, and taxpayers have in regards to books and instructional materials perceived as sexualizing students? Yes. I lay fears with information. I invite everybody to listen to Dr. Kiesling's podcast dated 4/11/23. In a non-emotional, science-based commentary, Dr. Kiesling, longtime medical practitioner, addresses gender dysphoria. His podcast is on 650 KENI. I happened upon it just by accident. All right. Once informed, parents not influenced by transgender activities, transgender activists, beer commercials, trendy graphic novels, publishing companies, booksellers, television shows, and sadly now Disney movies, et cetera, will need to make a decision. Is the information presented to all students in the regular collection of a school library meeting the curriculum needs as necessary information? I would argue that incorporating books into school libraries on gender dysphoria are harmful. Librarians, God bless them, are trying to help, but this is a private, family matter. It requires the services of a professional. Librarians have argued that students need information. They do, but not hoaxy novels or explicit graphic cartoons. And this brings me back to my point. Libraries house books that meet the needs of the student. No book on being, becoming, or searching for gender identity is needed because it is not factual nor science-based. In the case of very small children who are vulnerable and impression, impressionable, cutesy books on gender misinformation are indoctrination. If you are a boy, you have boy parts. If you are a girl, you have girl parts. Little kids know that. Ask them. As a parent guardian, you know your child, and the school needs to stay out of your business. Dr. Kiesling makes a great point about doctors who prescribe drugs inhibiting, inhibiting hormonal growth and performing surgeries by amputating healthy parts. They're, they are violating their oath, do no harm. I ask, do no harm to the, I ask that the Anchorage School District do no harm. What was the district thinking when they allowed?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we have Mike Grunst by phone. Mr. Grunst, can you hear me? Star mute.
There we go. Sorry, I took this again for the star six to get through. All right, hey, good afternoon. Thank you, ma'am. Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me the time to speak. My name is Mike Grunst. My views represent my own and do not represent those of the Department of Defense, the US Army, or the National Guard. To the earlier speaker, I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Ayak Saktuk. Thank you for allowing me and my family to visit your ancestral lands. I will do my best to honor and appreciate it to the best of my ability. Over the past years, I've spoken to the board on several issues, education funding, importance of saving the immersion programs, my support of adjusting school opening times based on, on science. Today, revenue issue brewing, and our community is going to need the support of the board and the administration to address it. Let me preface my comments with a note that I don't have all of the facts. We are still trying to gather them, so we can prepare our team to engage with all the appropriate entities, specifically Anchorage School District, Anchorage School Board, US Customs and Immigration Service, Senator Murkowski, Senator Sullivan, and Representative Eltola. I have a couple of children. They're enrolled in the amazing Chinese immersion program. One is in Park and the other at Begedge Middle School. Two of their teachers are being deported. We don't know yet all of the reasons why. I know that they have an H1B visa. They've reached the maximum dwell time of six years. One is being sent home as of March and the other in October of next year. These Anchorage residents are part of our community. They have kids enrolled in the Anchorage School District, including an 11th grader in the highly gifted program at West. They have taught our community's children, including some of yours, for the last six years. They want to stay, we want them to stay, and they have earned their right to stay. We have had some difficulty, but we are working through getting some of the details. We understand we cannot request items that are personal in nature. We have not, and we will not do so. We simply need to create a shared understanding so we can engage with one voice. We are preparing our documentation, we are gathering information. We need the information on what the district's procedures, timelines, and processes are for hiring immersion teachers. What are the processes, alerts, and gateways for assisting immersion teachers to get permitted residence if they desire? What are the promises being made to these highly desirable and very eager teachers immigrating from overseas who has these promises? And what capability measures are in place to ensure those are being met? Note that nothing that I'm requesting is personal in nature, nothing is classified as sensitive. We simply want to understand so we, we can assist. We need to speak with one voice. Strong communities are built on the basis of strong schools. Strong schools are built on good teachers, good administration, supported children, and engaged parents. Please help me, when I come back to you, to engage with one voice to keep these two important pillars of our community. Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you, sir. Next, also on the phone, we have Ashley List. I do not see Ashley on, in the queue. So that brings us back to our agenda, item E, the consent agenda.
I'd like, I'd like to pull items 06, memo 068 and memorandum 130.
068?
Mm-hmm.
And 130? Yes.
Madam President, absent any other board members wishing to pull an item, I would move to approve the consent agenda as amended. Second?
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda as amended. That is, with the removal of memorandum 068 and 013, those will move down to action items. Is there any opposition to approving the agenda as amended? I mean, not the agenda, the consent agenda. Seeing, hearing, none. The consent agenda is approved except for those two items. And they will become item three. I'm sorry. Yeah, we did get a second. Item three would be memorandum 068 under F. And item four will be item 130. All right. Thank you. That brings us to section F, our action items. We're going to begin with memorandum number 27. Can I get a motion to approve?
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 127, Approval of Land Acknowledgements. It is the administration's recommendation that the school board approve the following land acknowledgement language.
Your second? Moved in second to approve the memo number 127, the approval of land, the land acknowledgement. We have one person signed up to speak. Nope, not on that one. No, it's on the next one. We have no one signed up to speak. Any discussion? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank Dr. Bryant and the administration for the collaboration and work that's been undertaken since the board passed the memorandum which tasked the administration with taking this step. And I'm looking forward to any subsequent follow-up administrative regulations that might be required to kind of finalize our thorough and documented process for the use of the acknowledgement. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, comment? Seeing none? We'll do a voice vote, please. We'll do a voice vote, please.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins? President Bellamy?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item two under action. Memorandum number 132.
Madam President, I move to approve AST Memorandum number 132, relocate Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, or ANCCS, for school year 2324. The administration recommends that the Anker School Board approve and authorize the superintendent to relocate ANCCS from their current location at Biddy Davis East Anker High School to the building currently serving as Abbott Loop Elementary School. In addition, the ANCCS pre-K program will relocate from Mountain View so they can consolidate education operations. Second.
Moved in second to approve Memorandum number 132. We have Mr. Patterson signed up to speak. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Michael Patterson, and I'm a parent member of the ANCCS APC. I'm speaking for myself. I want to keep this short. I just want to thank the school board and the administration for working with ANCCS in a thoughtful and professional manner. I can generally say that interacting and working with ASD since I've started working on the APC has given me a lot of relief because I know Anker students are in good hands. And if people know me personally, I never say anything good about any municipal government entity in Anker. So it's a moment. You know, and regardless of your decision tonight, I look forward to working with the school board and the administration in the future. And thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Right. Member Jacobs, you want to kick us off?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. As an avid watcher of Anker Assembly meetings, I can vouch for Mr. Patterson's testimony. I did want to thank the administration for first focusing on Abbott Loop Elementary students and getting the transition plan situated for them. And then quickly after that need was taken care of, moving to support the students and families of ANCCS. It's another longstanding challenge I think the district is going to be able to address, which is heartening. And kudos to the Policy Committee of the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. They've been dealing with a lot of uncertainty and non-ideal academic situations resulting from being stored upstairs in the hallway of one of our amazing campuses. But it's still a hallway. And so I'm excited to see the positive outcomes that will occur from this transition. And I'm fully in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Member Lessons? And then Member Wilson?
I just wanted to echo some of Member Jacobs' comments. Until you see the learning that is happening in the constrained space, you can't really understand how much of a challenge that their current circumstances are bringing to that learning environment, to that learning opportunity, to the play that should be taking place in a playground that's fully functional, but it's kind of an ad hoc playground, to the lunch space. So I'm eager for our Alaska Native Cultural Charter students to have all the spaces that they need and deserve. And again, I do appreciate the care and concern that has been focused on the Abbott Loop students. And I think that the five-year timeline is an appropriate amount of time to create a new path forward for the community.
Thank you, Member Lessons. You know that timeline was set by the Fire Marshal, not ASD. Member, yeah.
Yeah, Higgins. That's okay. I understand. Heal. I want to echo close the appreciation for it. This school is only a few blocks away from me. And I can tell you that the community council looks forward to, actually, on the east side of that, there was land, parkland, and they had worked it out, that they were going to fence it in, put in some fruit trees and some other stuff for students to be engaged in. That's how strongly supportive the community is of this coming in. So this is win-win-win. And what's most important is win for the kids. They're going into a safe environment location, not going to someplace that doesn't meet the standards. They're going into a community that's really looking forward to receiving them. They don't want to see the school closed. They like this a lot. And they're looking at a partnership to make this school really something special for the kids with that extra land that the park has there right by the creek, and they got plans for that. So I look forward to this. I greatly appreciate the way the administration worked with the charter school. When I got on charter school in 2008, it was kind of like they want to be on their own, go find their own place, and it was really negative. Today, I like the attitude and the approach. We got to hold people accountable. But I appreciate the idea we want all kids, and that includes the charter schools to be in safe schools. And it means a lot. So thank you, Superintendent.
And thank you, Member Higgins. All right. Member Wilson?
So I will repeat much of what I heard, which is very positive, and I appreciate that from the other school board members. But I've had the opportunity to tour ANCCS multiple times. And one thing that stuck out to me was what they really enjoy or will enjoy is the opportunity to do the outdoor cultural learning activities that they haven't been able to really enjoy in the space that they're in. So I'm very excited about that for them. They really missed some of those opportunities and those opportunities for community members to come in and show those students those cultural activities outdoors. So I'm super excited that they'll have that space back.
Thank you. What about you, Dr. Bryant? Comments?
As was stated, the current situation for that charter school is not ideal for fulfilling its mission. So we were pleased to be able to support them during this temporary transition. So eventually, they can find a permanent home and fulfill their incredible mission for years to come.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? So the timeline, do we have a timeline on the move? Or is that something you'll bring back later?
I can answer that. We're going to do the bulk of the move during Memorial Day weekend because there's construction at East immediately after that and before that. So we have a short window. So we're going to move only the items that need to be moved. And we've been working with the principal and APC president for a number of months now on finalizing this plan. But it'll be moved, and they'll be set up before school starts.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Let's vote.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. And congratulations to ANCCS. Thank you. Next, item three, F3, Memorandum number 068.
Madam President, I move to approve AST Memorandum number 068, Award of Professional Services Agreement Chugak High School Roof Replacement and Restoration. Recommended actions to approve the selection of Rim Architects as designer of record for Chugak High School Roof Replacement and Restoration and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract with Rim Architects for professional services in the amount of $879,038 for the purpose of design services. Second.
Moved in second to approve Memorandum 068. Member Lessons, you pulled it?
Sure, thank you. Well, I think I understand that the funds are available. They came from the 2019 bond, if I'm correct. It does strike me that it may be worth tabling this until we reengage with the six-year CIP, which would be next fall, according to my general understanding of our timeline. So that is a brief version of my thinking at this point.
Any other comments? My only question would be timing. And I think it's on the agenda for, Dr. Bryant, Adam. Do you want to address the timing on this one?
Sure. Mr. Anderson, would you like to provide some insight?
Yes, so as you know, Chugak is an old school. That roof has been leaking, that 100,000-plus square feet, for quite a number of years. And the leaks are only getting worse as it has gone past its life expectancy. It's going to take a good six to eight months to get the design complete and approved in order to start doing a contract to repair that roof or replace it, hopefully as early as the following summer. So we're really talking about damage to the interior of the building and the infrastructure. I'm not sure what the CIP discussion might be unless the board is willing to consider closing a number of schools before August or discussing that. I'm not sure where Member Lessons wanted to take that discussion. So I guess I would ask as to the intent.
Member Lessons?
Well, the intent is to be thoughtful before spending $800,000 on a project that would ultimately cost $16.5 million as it's the replacement, given the tenuous circumstances that I feel like we find ourselves in as a district right now. And so we've got a lot of roofie. We have a lot of leaky roofs in the ASD. And I acknowledge the age, the need. And I am simply suggesting that we table until we have a better vision of what our future may hold.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I was hoping to get a better understanding of that this funding comes from a prior bond. Do we also have approved bond funds to complete the roof replacement work? Or is that something we intend to bond for? And I'm trying to pull up our six-year CIP as I speak now. So is that information available?
Actually, we would bond for that. Again, it's going to take a significant amount of time to come up with the design for this. And then depending on what the cost is, I think most of you are aware now that when we do a rough order of magnitude cost, it's about 25% accurate based off prior things. And so estimates for those can be wildly off from a 65% design or higher. But generally, you know, you have to get a design done to actually know what it's going to cost and the full extent.
Could I follow up, Madam President?
Follow up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Could, do you know, and again, I was trying to pull up the document. I'm not having luck yet. What year we, at least according to our current CIP, we may bond for the Chugak roof replacement at this point?
Fortunately, we have Larry Morris, who's an expert in all things. And he just signaled that it's 2024.
Did you have a follow-up? Member Jacobs, your mic.
Thank you. I was thinking, which probably was best with my mic off. I am wondering if we're intending to bond for it in '24. And I second Member Lessons' comments about wanting a more in-depth conversation about all things capital improvement in our CIP. And I think I've shared this with Mr. Anderson as well. I think we need to circle back to it sooner rather than later. If, because I'm not sure the board will want, what the board wants on its next bond proposition. And I think we need to continue to be strategic until school bond debt reimbursement funding comes back from the state. And it will come back at a reduced level, I think 50%, once the moratorium ends. And so I'm hoping to re-review that and see what we're comfortable with. And so I guess I'm wondering if this can wait for a certain period of time or if this is something that we really think needs to be on the '24 bond ahead of any other projects. So curious about that, too, I guess.
Right. Larry, now go up to the main table. There's also structural issues involved. So I think we can answer as in-depth as you would like.
While you guys are coming forward, this was on the consent agenda that got moved down to the action item. And I'm a little surprised, but at the same time, it's board members' prerogative to pull whatever items they'd like. Even if, I mean, I can't see a scenario where we're not going to repair this roof. I just can't see it. Even if we, even if we put it off eventually and don't even move, if we don't use the building, we need to repurpose the building. So I'm struggling with why this is coming up at this point in time.
Madam President, could I put a point on maybe the question I was trying to get to a minute ago?
Sure.
Okay. So I guess my question is, regardless of what the board, what the board may choose to discuss regarding the CIP, is it going to be administration's recommendation that this particular project be on the 2024 bond? Is it that urgent of a project?
Okay. Hear me? Okay. All right. This project was bonded for the design. As part of, after the earthquake, all of our schools had what was called a Tier One seismic evaluation done. When this was, all roof projects now for the last three years have also had Tier Twos done, which goes into depth of anything that we find. Also, we have what's called, we check for over stress and any drift issues. Old codes did not take into account snowdrift. As you've seen from the last winter, snowdrift has become a bit of an issue on roofs. So we've taken that into account. We had that performed. And in fact, we do have some structural issues, of which with it, we had a, I would call it a 15% design on what the corrections would be, as well as an estimate, of which we're looking at at least $3.5 million with the structural issues to go. So besides designing the new roof, we are also having to design the structural fixes. And so that's going to take some time to get done. And therefore, it's such that my recommendation is to move it to the 2024 bond so that as soon as we get the design done, we would, in the late summer of 2024, put it out to bid. So that contract bidding through contract and notice to proceed is about three months. Therefore, if any steel has to be ordered, delivered, and be available, it would be so that we can, in fact, get this done during the summer construction season while school is not in session. Of 2025. Correct.
Other questions? Okay. Member Lessons?
So I have a point of clarification. I think I pulled up the correct CIP, which says that it would be under the 2025 bond. So, or is that referring to when construction?
We have not made the new CIP. There will be multiple changes from the CIP the board saw last fall to the CIP that you will see next fall. Some of those changes will be not putting on automatically rebuilding schools, but going towards, you know, refurbishing the schools or renewals, some of the other things the board's been talking about. And then there'll be some other changes in timelines just based off what we've seen with some of these engineer studies of the buildings in the past six months. So we do plan on building a brief to show the board so we can talk through what is the new methodology going forward and the development of a CIP. Go through. Go through with the board to talk through what are the metrics that are being used to prioritize? And what do they actually mean? And so when you see the CIP as it starts developing, it won't be a surprise. I think all of us have looked at the spreadsheet and looked at it over a six-year period and gone down and, and done that. But, but we'll also have some different visuals to try to show that project as it goes through its lifecycle on buildings or types of buildings, whether it's the five prototypicals from the 90s or the, the eight prototypicals from the 80s. Those things that are really groups and chunks of like-type buildings that are all ultimately going to need something similar. We're going to try to make that a little more clearer and easier to understand, not just for board members, but for the public and frankly, ourselves internally. We won't have that ready in two weeks, though.
Other questions, comments? Member Holloman?
Do you foresee other projects at Chugiak, say, five or six years out that would require bonding?
I don't remember them being on anything I've seen six years out. But it doesn't mean that in, in the design, as they're looking at structure, that there won't be other, other issues identified that might change that. But at least right now, I'm unaware of any.
Comments? Seeing none. The motion is to approve 068. Ready to vote?
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
No.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And that passes six to, six yeas, one nay. That brings us to F4 memorandum number 130. What is the will of the board?
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 130. Approval of funding allocations of major maintenance capital improvement grant funds. Recommended action is to improve and authorize the allocation of 5.32 million from the State Department of Education Capital Improvement Major Maintenance Grant Award Funds towards safety and security projects across the district. Second.
Moved in second to approve. Member Lessons, you pulled it.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of really, well, I appreciate the memo. It's a response to a lot of conversations that took place in the fall. You know, given what I think that I heard about a lot of other leaky roofs, I guess I was curious about the immediacy of fire alarm panels sound really important, but you know, so are a lot of the roofs that we saw photos of with offices, classrooms, workrooms totally disrupted and, you know, upended. And I just, I wonder if the administration could talk about why fire alarm panels in particular were the optimal path forward in this memo.
Oh, sure. I can talk through that. So fire alarm panels are absolutely required. These are outdated. They're no longer maintained. Or they are maintained as best we can, but you can't get parts. They can't be upgraded. And let's go back to Abbott Loop that didn't have a fire suppression system. The reason the fire marshal let us still occupy that facility is because it had an enhanced fire alarm system. So if there was anything, smoke in the walls, anything else, we knew that we could get every student and staff member out of that building in plenty of time. Without a fire detection system, your level of risk and liability, if there's a fire inside a wall like happened at Aquarian. And, and fortunately, they had a fire, a fire alarm that, that picked it up, even though the fire suppression system didn't go off because there wasn't heat and flames. It, it's a requirement. And if you upgrade it, if you replace it, now the ADA rules have changed in the last many decades where it also has to be voice activated. So we can't just replace it. One, we can't repair them. Two, if you replace it, it has to be ADA compliant. So it's really, truly a safety concern.
Other comments? Questions? Seeing in here, did you, okay, seeing and hearing none, let's vote. The motion before you is to approve memorandum number 130.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Thank you, and that passes unanimously. Moving on to item G, our non-action items. They will come back before us at our next meeting. H is, we don't have any other additional public comment. So that brings us to I, superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, ASD Board and community. I'll keep my comments brief tonight. The administration is preparing to manage quite a few positive changes over the next several months, including shifting to a new ELA curriculum for K-3 and laying the groundwork for moving sixth grade to middle school in '24, '25. We'll also now be supporting ANCCS with their relocation to the Abbott Loop facility. While the intent is for this relocation to be temporary, this move will support the school in fulfilling its mission, and we're happy to support in that effort. We'll also continue to support Abbott Loop students and families with having an intentional transition to their new schools next year. Looking ahead to our next board meeting, we'll have a number of major decisions to make, including a possible adjustment to school start times and district-wide professional learning communities. These are major decisions that would impact all families and the greater community, and we're happy to provide information to the board over the next couple of weeks to inform your decision. And lastly, I want to recognize the school business partnerships who coordinated a great luncheon at King Tech High last week to recognize incredible businesses who support our students. I had the privilege of selecting Mr. Rich Owens for the superintendent award, who has been incredible leader, that's raised support for schools and mentor students for many years. And as we begin to plan our college career and life readiness transformation, our school business partners will play an essential role in connecting students to opportunities. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Any questions for Dr. Bryant? Yes, member lessons.
I have two questions, and I'm going to ask them in one sentence. Are, are curriculum materials for the ELA adoption on, on track? Are they going to be on the boat on time to get here when we need them? And what is the curricular framework going to be for summer school? Which is sort of awkwardly positioned between an outgoing curriculum and an incoming curriculum?
Okay. Great questions that I do not know offhand. I'll, I'll give my team an opportunity to see if they know offhand. If not, we can put that easily in Board Connect by Friday.
I think we'd be looking at Board Connect by Friday.
Chugiak should be. Is that good, member lessons? And the questions were about curriculum?
Are things on, are, you know, we?
Are we on track?
Through things? And doesn't seem like our teachers will get them in a timely fashion? And then what will the summer school, I guess that sort of early learning framework be? Will it be continuing with what we have or will, you know, things show up before the June start times? And then implemented at that point?
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, that brings us to our last item, next to last item. And that is our board comments. Who wants to kick us off? Member Donley, let's start with you online.
Thank you, Madam President. I remain concerned that some of the public testimony identifying some of the books appearing in some of our school libraries may put us in violation of state law. And I'm hoping the administration is doing a thorough examination of that issue. And that's my comment for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Donley. All right, so. Member Higgins?
Well, I, last school board meeting, I was in Orlando with the National School Board Association. And I have to say, there were two, three sessions that really set me off. It really just had me focused. One was just what are the, what they're doing a study on correlations to decide what makes enough, what, what factors make a difference on effective school boards? And that is in the early part of the study, but it's going to be real interesting when we see the results of it. So that's video, you could look at it. It's difficult for me to draw a whole lot of conclusions on it yet. They presented a lot of information, but it was being presented in a developmental stage. And so there were still some questions in there. It was interesting because they had, you know, they got to the issue of low-performing students. And you've got within, I think, a number of the school districts, they had Native Americans were at the top. And another ones, it was African-Americans at the top. It was, it was interesting because these, these are significant schools to do that. And I was just surprised and I'm saying, wait a minute. You know, this is, they're, they're putting things together that is challenging the, the, the questions. The second session I went to, they asked the question, what's ChatGPT? And I had no idea what that was. And probably 20% of the members there may have known what it was. And when you got to understand the artificial intelligence components of it, what it's doing, it was challenging, how are we going to change education? How do we prepare kids when you have the, the, what artificial intelligence is looking like it's performing and how quickly it's being implemented? And, and that was an interesting discussion. But the last one was one of the two people behind artificial intelligence gave a presentation. And they had it in 2010. Steve Jobs wanted to buy it. They said no, and six months later, we tried again and told them how it would make a big difference. So they finally did. But they're looking at this thing as, as such an unbelievably growth standpoint, how quickly it's growing. You, you, the internet was a 10-year-like duration. This thing, you know, is, is multiplying times 10, the, the size of it and the effectiveness of it in two months. It's going through the ceiling. You've got large IT groups, of course, reducing staff, and you've got other things. Google just paid 10 billion for the, for a, for the AI components that they bought. But the capability is unreal. They're, they're saying rapidly, this year, looking at things exceeding everything, they can capture and put everything that's known in, for information system, that anything's possible accessible in one programming, and you've got a, a program that has creativity in it. He gave an example where he said, I want to see a, a scary face with a bowl of noodles and wool. He didn't know what that would look like. And the computer put together one. It was a bowl with a little, little bit of noodles at the bottom, looking more like a chin. It had a wool across the eyes and, like, like a mask and two eyes. It was interesting. But the computer created that without any reference. It's creating itself, the new things. And it's just scary what's out there. I don't know how to prepare kids for when they're going to graduate now. I mean, I'm looking at that thing, and that was part of the discussion in there. We really focus on what needs to be taught for schools, and they are challenging that thing at the high level, and it's appropriate. If, if you want a, a book comparison, you want a book report, you want 850 words, you want it at a sixth-grade level, you want it to be humorous, you want this, it will print it for you. My wife had to go and check it out and said, okay, I've got a husband this age and he's ENTP and he's ADHD. What is he going to like doing? It gave a list and it looked like it was a perfect match. That was kind of scary to me. But the creativity part, the things, what they're saying is we need to be able to focus on them being able to know how to ask what it is that you want, more, less than doing it. Low-level skills are going to be a higher priority. Well, that's kind of interesting assessment of it. But the, the growth of this, like the internet, like it's, it's like this. And so I thought we were dealing with 20 years from now. We're not even dealing with 20 months from now. It's that, it's here today. And I don't know what we should be doing from an educational standpoint at this time to respond, to help kids be prepared for something like this. And I just hope we get really a good focus type group. I've got a National School Board Association that's going to be heavily focused on this. But this, this outcome is a game changer. And the bad news is, it kept me awake, is I remember Stephen Hawkins came out with a list of 10 things that are likely to be the cause of the end demand. You know, the, the asteroid, of course, right? The biological. And one of the 10 was AI, artificial intelligence. Would be one of the 10 ways that man could be wiped out. A little bit like Terminator and everything else, but whatever. He put it in the top 10. And this thing, how, what it's going to do is kind of interesting. So I just propose that everybody just take a, I don't know. We're going to have to talk about it and think about it, but somehow it's going to take a big movement to go in that direction. Thank you.
Another way would be to just start naming all the board members until you get to the one. I've watched that happen too.
AI is, is, it brings us all to tears, really. We, we did, in fact, have a, we, we did pass a new policy about ChatGPT. But in a way, it was a very limited policy, right? It was a, are these my board member comments? Okay, all right. Right, we, we don't want students to rely on it as that crutch to produce the 150-word essay. And I do think it's fundamentally important that we think about, how do we get our students to ask the questions of tomorrow? To get ahead of this because they have a very different future ahead of them than graduates of five or 10 or 20 or 30 years ago. So I'm glad that you had a strong conversation about ChatGPT. Okay, so I, I'll, I'll just keep going. I recently attended ASD's gifted mentorship celebration right here in this room with 50-some-odd students, their mentors. It was really an extraordinary example of partnership. These students are working with community professionals for four or five months. They're shadowing, they are, they're doing the dirty work in veterinary offices and labor and delivery rooms and in astronomy labs. It's a really remarkable celebration of that partnership. I also had the privilege of speaking at the Large Group Orchestra event, performance. There was an adjudicator who was invited to help students from Chugiak, Eagle River, Service UnWest get some really fabulous feedback on their performances. And I also appreciate the board's support, as I traveled to Juneau last week on behalf of ASD, to really share information with our legislators about ASD's laser focus on our goals, to suggest some possible scenarios of different funding possibilities. And I really spoke with individuals on a one-to-one basis on the importance of trust. And I think it was a really good conversation. I also got delayed there from Russian volcanic ash. And one of the upsides was that I got to watch Thunderbird Ukulele from Betty Davis East High School open at the Alaska Folk Festival on Saturday evening, and they got a standing ovation and did a fabulous job. So they were there as part of a really sizable grant from some community foundation whose name escapes me, but kudos to them.
We'll go back to member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President, for not making me follow the poignant remarks of member Higgins. I wanted to start with something a bit more mundane and mentioned that earlier this month. I had the privilege of, I'm seeing a, a orchestra concert at Bartlett High School. There were students from Gruning, Romeg, Wendler, Mirror Lake and Mirrors present, and it was a privilege to watch them perform. privilege to watch them perform. I didn't realize before attending how many, and there were dozens of staff involved with the production of the event. And so learning more about how much time and dedication it took to put that event on was really humbling. So congratulations to all those students and thank you for the staff and families for making that possible. In addition, earlier this week, I had the, I guess it was last week, I had the chance to attend the recognition of Deeds Purple Star Award to four ASD schools joining the schools we already have in the program. It was heartening to see the extra supports that our district provides to military children and the challenges that they navigate through their K twelve journey in addition to our families. So congratulations there. And then wanted to give a special shout out to Mr. Fleckenstein and his IT team this weekend. There was some uncertainty, as member lessons mentioned, about staff being well, the legislators actually being able to return home, and there were a number of constituent outreach events and testimony opportunities. And there was an event at Chester Valley this weekend that was scheduled to occur. And our IT team stepped in and prepared a contingency plan to allow representatives' rights, mirrors and Senator Wachowski to be able to connect with their constituents should the most unfortunate situation occur. They had an alternative plan ready to utilize the school for their Zoom needs in an instant. And so we have a great team, we knew that. And so, but thank you, Dr. Bryant, for supporting them and appreciate, Mike, everything you folks do and your work. So those are my remarks. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Okay, member Wilson.
It's been a busy time for everybody, which is awesome. So I got to attend the School Business Partnership Luncheon as well. I've had the privilege of being on that board for, we won't talk about how many years at this point, but I've had the pleasure of working with Rich Owens for many years, and he's been extremely committed to ASD students and as far as hiring many of them as well in his business. So I'm super excited that you had the opportunity to recognize him as he moves into retirement, which is very exciting for him as well. Want to recognize our fantastic MC at that event, MJ. He did an amazing job. And thank you to the board members that had the opportunity to attend. I know everybody wanted to, but we all have really busy schedules. So that was, that was lots of fun. I really enjoyed that. I also had the opportunity to tour the dome. We got a, we all got an invitation to come do a tour of the dome. There was, I went on a Saturday and boy, the parking was really difficult to find a spot because we had so many of our ASD students there running track. There was, it was just, it was plumpful with, with students and as a mom who, as a parent, who paid for their kids to play comp soccer. I'm really happy that the, many of our students have the opportunity through ASD to use those facilities and enjoy lots of the experiences that they get to through their athletic programs here, which is very cool. Also, I wanted to recognize that at the School Business Partnership Luncheon, the Alaska Native Dance Group from Windler Middle School. So we had students, middle school students performing. We had students from Hanshu Middle School that were assisting at that program. They were extremely well spoken. I was very impressed with those students. And then our King Tech Culinary Class staff and students served a wonderful meal. So they always do a phenomenal job there and have amazing customer service skills. So thank you to them as well. Also wanted to share that it's graduation season. And if you'd like to show your senior pride, ASD is once again producing yard signs to honor our graduates. And there's more information on the website if you want any of, any of those signs to, to put out to honor our graduates. And I have been informed that ASD will be doing an attendance campaign next year. I know that was part of the discussion earlier on. And we've partnered with Jay Bear to keep hosting the Purple Heart Schools event, which is great. I thank you for, member Jacobs, for attending that event as well. Our next board meeting is May ninth, and please join us. We are going to have our annual Denali Awards at that board meeting. And our next communication meeting is going to be next Thursday, April twenty seventh at, I think we're at noon. I believe we're at noon.
Thank you. Thank you, member Wilson. Member Holloman?
I'll say the next governance committee meeting will be right after whatever she said. Immediately following the communications committee meeting. I had an Alaska Association of School Boards board meeting, which caused me to miss the middle school debate championships. But they are back on, they're happening. It's an incredible event if you ever get the chance to go. It is, is an awesome event that heavily promoted and pushed by Mr. Johnson from UAA. And our, our high school teams work on it really hard because they want practice middle school students coming to their high schools so they can continue their dominance. It's a winning strategy. It's, but it turns out to be a lot of community service as well. They do a terrific job with it. I'll also say a friend of mine related to me just recently. He retired last year, but is subbing back in the same school, which is fun because you still know some of the students and you're very familiar with everything. He was working with a group of students that are not strong writers, but they had an assignment to write a thank you letter about something. And he said one in particular was just incredibly well done, just just really well written and expressive. And when he commented to the student how impressed he was with it, the student said, well, I use Chat GPT to, to write it. And there are interesting things, that another graduate from our system that works with drones and files federal grants to repair rural airfields has Chat GPT set up on his own server and used it to write a federal grant. And he said it's reading off of his data. He looked over the paperwork for about four or five minutes and then filed it. And this is something that would normally consume some hours of work in preparing. And so, yeah, people are using this in real life to save time and make money. There's, there's going to be a huge demand for it as people began, begin to understand how it can be used for things that we previously did not think about being automated. But, but it's there. So it is, it is going to change education. We thought pocket calculators were evil. This, this is going to be a lot worse, especially as things keep getting smaller and smaller and things happen. I did spend a few days in Juneau also. All of mine were intentional, unlike member lessons. We've got some really strong allies, and I would urge everybody that supports public education and all of our board members, please do find time to testify. If we're testifying to groups that are pushing for us, like Senate Finance, they need the public comment to back them up. And if there are groups that, that are trying to hold us back, they need to hear from us as well so that everything is balanced. There was a lot of positive energy in the building and there, there's a lot of, a lot of good stuff happening down there, but it's really unpredictable what the outcomes are going to be. But very interesting and entertaining trip. And for anyone that did see my picture in the newspaper, I had been outside in the rain and my hair is thinning, but it looked a lot worse in that picture. Other than that, it was a great trip.
Right, let's go to Michelle.
The only thing I had to say is, well, okay, two things. It is prom season, so member Wilson's South Prom was at Change Point on Saturday, so that might have explained some of your parking issues. But yeah, super excited to see, I know we've had a couple of successful proms and the rest of them to follow. And last meeting, or next meeting will be my last one. So after that, I will no longer be an ASD student. So after that, it will go over to Josh.
All right, and we are excited to have Josh, but we're heartbroken that you're leaving us. Okay, so I, I just want to thank I just want to make a couple of comments. One, this is the most obviously the funniest board I've ever worked on. Number two, the most active in terms of advocacy. I don't know, member lessons, this is, this is her other full-time job, advocacy. And talking to legislators, sometimes good, sometimes, well, we have to pull her off. But that's good, that's good. And I want to thank her and member Holloman for dropping everything, going to Juneau to represent our forty four thousand plus students, their families and our five thousand employees, because that's what it's going to take. I also want to thank the superintendent and the staff for answering all of the questions. I mean, I get them and then I need to, some I can answer right away, others it's kind of like, I don't want it to be used in the wrong way, so let me get, I have to call a friend. And so whenever I've called a friend, be it the superintendent or anybody on that wall, I have gotten a response, so I appreciate that. And then finally, I just, we are going to miss Ellie, but we are also, this is, this whole thing is about continuous improvement. So when one door closes, another one opens and we're going, we're hoping that as you enter college and, did you hear back from that other award yet? Not yet, okay. End of the month, okay, till next meeting, hopefully. All right, so I'll keep it a surprise. And with that, I will not lead with member Higgins again because when he said his wife GPT him, I thought I would die, I'm still dying. Anyway, that's it. That's all I have for tonight. But anyway, thank you, guys, and we can move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, Madam President.
Move to second to adjourn. Any opposition? Seeing none, we get out of here.